We find we're getting close to the eight o'clock hour and we want to move to those last two items and push something else to later or another evening, we can certainly do.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, why don't we begin?
Thank you.
We all set with that? I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and.
Roll call please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Cruz.
President.
Mrs. Dempsey.
Present.
Ms. Fox.
Present.
Ms. Hume.
Present.
Mr. Malloy.
Present.
Mr. McCandrew.
Present.
Mrs. Welby.
Present.
Mrs. Yanni.
Yes, present.
Ms. Gil Martin.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you very much. Director Hume, you're going to begin with status of and proposed system for technology distribution.
That is what I was planning to do. If that's all right with you, Inspector Director, President Gil Martin.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Well, I think there's good news and there's some progress coming on. So if I could ask Mr. Doherty to give us a report on where we're up to with the elusive Chromebooks.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And I'll treat it. I'll try to keep my answers succinct so we could get through the agenda this evening. But thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to address the board and good evening, everyone. As per my call and Mr. Del Preet, our call with CDW on Tuesday, they currently have 1,650 Chromebooks in their configuration department, which is the white glove service we've talked about previously, setting those up for us. So that means essentially they're going to be set up for our network config for our district when they arrive. So that, you know, saves us an absolute ton of time in getting these units. So when they come in, they're already asset tagged and they get shipped directly to the school they were ordered for. So that saves us a tremendous amount of setup on our end. It's, I'm real happy to say I got the first tracking orders for the first set of Chromebooks. So that's, that's very positive news. So they were emailed to me and Mr. Del Preet. I believe yesterday we got those. The rest will be delivered shortly thereafter. I mean, they, they won't wait, obviously, for all 8,300 units to ship them. As they're configured for each school, they ship each school. So we will be getting Chromebooks probably over the course of the next couple of weeks, two to three weeks. Mr. Del Preet, I know you're on this call. If I'm, you know, if you want to chime in, that would, you know, certainly be acceptable, but I expect lots of things to be happening over the next few weeks. It was nice to get tracking numbers. I'm not going to lie.
And with the distribution, Mr. Doherty, you, you obviously have some idea of which schools are going to receive them in which order. Once they are received by the school, what is the distribution process then?
Well, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to make sure that students that don't have a device get a device. That's the number one priority. Eventually, we will get to the point where we're going to swap out the older devices that are out with students with the newer devices, but our number one priority is to make sure that every student has a device in their hand. We're going to follow the same distribution procedures that each school individually set up in the spring and in the fall. Now, it was a little bit different at each school, just because the layout is different, obviously, at each school. But it's very well organized that the families are contacted. They set up, you know, there's appointments where there's no lines outside. So it's, it's very, very efficient. They come, they as designated time, they pick up the unit and it's distributed.
And, and does each school already know which student doesn't have a Chromebook or a device at this time?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yes. We have, we have a, we have a master spreadsheet of everyone that has one, what serial number they have, what device, what model. We absolutely know that. Yes, Director.
So they'll know, they'll know in which order to contact the people and.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, that's good news. That's.
That's positive news. I mean, I was real excited. Nobody was more excited on this call than me to get tracking numbers put into my, put into my email mailbox.
I, I think I'm probably not the only person who the last few months thought they may have been mythical. But it's good to know. I, I think one of the things we want is a picture of you holding up the first one that gets here, Mr. Doherty, because it's been a lot of hard work for you and Mr. Del Preet to track these down and keep on the case, but thank you.
Yeah, I mean, and I mean, I know we've been waiting a long time for these and it's not that it matters to the Scranton School District, but we are still ahead of so many districts in our area that are still waiting on Chromebooks that ordered after we did. It's just, you know, if, if you had said a year ago that it would take, you know, seven months to get or six months to get Chromebooks delivered, no one in that line of work would have said that was true. You know, if we had ordered pre-pandemic pandemic, you're talking like five days before, before it gets sent out. It's just, we went from, and I didn't know this either, we went from the shortage being processors to now the shortage is glass. So the glass screens that are on all the Chromebooks now is that what the shortage is.
Yeah, it's amazing. You were prescient. The district was prescient to jump in and order as quickly as we did, and I think that showed good forethought. I really do.
Well, I mean, it's, I, I wish we could have had these in the hands of kids much, much sooner, but as soon as we could get them, we're going to get them out.
Well, that's great. Okay. Anyone got any questions?
May I ask one question?
Sure, certainly.
Mr. Doherty, what, what's an estimate of our numbers of families that don't have anything right now? Like, what's our, our top priority of like, how many is there?
That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good question. We have about 4,500 out into the hands of families. But like, so knowing that we have like approximately 9,300 students, but we don't know if all those students don't have a device. Like, I'll, I'll use my daughter as an example. Molly Doherty has a computer. She's not short of device. So she's able to get on and do her work. Our first priority has to be kids that, you know, we don't have contact with, obviously, that are struggling for a device.
And we have a way to, to find those out, obviously.
Absolutely.
Who's in need.
Yeah, we're tracking participation, but anybody that was not given a district issued Chromebook is going to be contacted to see if they, you know, if they want one.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further on this?
You're moving to item number three now, capital improvement plan.
I think we are, President Gil Martin. Mr. Doherty, maybe you can update us on the capital improvement plan.
Absolutely. And I would, I would certainly ask Mr. Laffey and Dr. Finan to jump in at any point if they want to, because they're also very involved in this process. And I see Ian Tyson on here also. Welcome Ian from PFM. He's also very involved in this process. I'm going to start by saying that the new owner's representative that was appointed Dewey Engineering, who is, will be our project managers on large projects. This, their inclusion in our, in our district projects, this is a game changer for us because they bring a level of experience and expertise that I'm going to tell you we've never had. They bring project management, they bring engineering, different types of engineering, they bring architects to the table. And they're basically making sure that the projects that we engage in are being done, not only being completed, but being completed to spec and being completed as they should be and in a timely manner without change orders. This, this is a game changer for us. This is really going to help when we start talking about doing large capital improvement projects within our school district. They've already been on site multiple days. I've spent multiple days touring buildings with them. They're doing the feasibility study also. But right now they're jumping on our projects that we have slated for summer of 21 and they're making sure the bids get out. They're going to review the bids. They're going to, you know, do all the due diligence, which is extremely helpful for us. I mean, it's, it's almost like we have an engineering firm, an architecture firm and project manager in-house. Like this is, this is a tremendous step for our district in helping move forward. Most likely, there may be some modifications to the proposed capital improvement plan as they get in and walk throughout our buildings and start, you know, doing a feasibility study and completing it. But certainly that would all be shared with you. We did also receive some RACP grant funds that are used, obviously, for some very specific projects. When we apply for a, a RACP grant, that's a grant for capital improvements. But it's, you have to state which projects you're going to use that money on if you are awarded that money and you have to match that money. So we picked some very large items that we know are coming. For instance, we picked, we included in the RACP grant like Armstrong HVAC, like South Scranton boilers, like Scranton High Sprinkler Systems. Because we know that they're projects that are going to bring large numbers. So anything that comes out of RACP, that's just, at that point, that's almost like gravy for us. Because that's, that's, well, we were very fortunate to get a $3 million RACP grant. So that's $3 million that can be applied to those large projects as long as we match that 3 million. Whereas instead of it costing us potentially $6 million to do some of these capital projects, now it's only actually going to cost us three because we got that RACP grant. But that has to be used for very specific purposes. Pat, am I saying that correctly?
You're absolutely right, Paul. And, you know, I'll, I'll add, there was a fourth product that we applied for, which is the West Intermedia and West Grand High School renovations to support the, the STEM program. And I'll, I'll just again echo what Paul said. It is a match, a match grant. So we applied for $4 million. We were fortunate enough to be awarded three. So we will need to match the 3 million and I don't believe we've met since probably the closing of our 2020 bond issue, but the district has closed on the 2020 capex borrowing bonds of, at approximately $30 million to help fund that.
So really that RACP grant was, was, that was, it's like gravy. Again, it's like gravy for us. We'll take every penny we can get in that, in those kind of, from those grants. Because honestly, we have significant capital needs and I think that with the inclusion of, of Dewey Engineering, with the bond issue, with the RACP grant, you know, we really have an opportunity here to move beyond doing projects that are almost like putting out fires that are just emergency based to really moving into some facilities improvements and moving facilities, you know, into 21st century learning environments, which is absolutely the goal of, of everyone. We're forging ahead with a wide variety of projects. We are doing, obviously, a full assessment of all of our district facilities. The district wide ventilation study, the onsite visits is completed. We should have a report in about seven to 10 days about potential upgrades that may be needed in our ventilation systems and they'll, I'll, I'll be addressed. We will be moving ahead with the South Intermediate Boiler retrofit or replacement project. We will be moving ahead with the roof at Willard Elementary. We will also be looking at roofing projects at Morris Elementary, West Intermediate and West High School. We're still addressing the Scranton High Sprinkler System. We will be looking at West Intermediate renovations to accommodate grade five for the 22, 23 school year. That was due directly, that ties directly to our plan for building reconfiguration in the recovery plan. And we are about two weeks from starting to seek bids on the Northeast Intermediate Abatement of the 1904 side on the ventilation side. So that school will be ready also for September. We are also looking at the stadium track replacement. We have gotten 20 years out of the track at the stadium, which is tremendous. We've replaced the turf twice in that time and we've gotten 20 years from the, from the track and it's starting to break down. So we will be looking at that project as well.
Thanks, Mr. Doherty. I might just, just give you a pause there because I've got a couple of questions on some of the things you've raised already.
Sure.
And perhaps other directors do as well. First of all, I think that there's an enormous boat of thanks that goes to everybody who worked for that RACP grant and also to our elected representatives who fought so hard for it. Because I know, I know how hard and how lucky we are to have elected representatives that, that work as hard as they do for us. And everybody in the district who worked to get that grant, it's a huge, huge accomplishment and a credit to, to everyone who was involved. With the district wide ventilation study, is this, I noticed that we had a report that said that the, that they were all working as designed. Will this study lead us to be able to improve them in the light of COVID with the extra ventilation that is being recommended everywhere?
You're, you're exactly on point. Our ventilation systems are, obviously, they operate as they were designed. So when we abate the 1904 side of Northeast, for instance, and with that ventilation system is then up and working, well, there'll be ventilation, but it'll be as the system was designed in 1904. So like there are the upgrades that they're looking at, like what needs to be done in our facilities to really to bring it up to, to current standards.
And are we looking at windows as well? Because I know in Northeast, one of the great advantages of Northeast, funnily enough, being an older building is the height of the ceiling is the size of the rooms. Don't build schools like that anymore. And, but those windows would, I mean, they're saying that a crack of four to five inches of a window makes a huge difference in the air circulation.
Right.
Against the virus. So we got plans in place at all to look at windows throughout the district or is that part of the ventilation study?
I don't know. That, you know what? That's a, that's a real good question, Director Hume. I, I don't have the answer to that. I think the study that was being done was specifically on the, the ventilation systems, not necessarily on the windows. There have been some window replacement projects throughout the district over, over many years. I could say that with experience because when I, my last year at West Intermediate, I know all the front windows of that building, you know, were replaced. So I, I can say that with, you know, just from experience. But, you know, that's an excellent point. I, that's something I would have to get back to you on.
Oh, yeah. I'm just wondering, maybe the, the administrators at the schools would probably, you know, at some point, maybe can just give us a brief, they work, they don't work, kind of answer, maybe.
That's easy. Yeah.
Not a big tall, but it's just one of those things.
No, you're, you're, you're spot on because, I mean, even talking to our consultants, when I talk to, you know, our reps from Kuchardi, you know, they, they say all the time, despite the circumstances, if, if you open a window, you don't have a ventilation problem.
And, and, and it's, and it's the best, to be honest, you know, again, we're going to be fighting this virus for a lot, lot, for a long time. And also I think funnily enough, the fact that flu is down so much this winter bears a lot on the precautions we're taking against COVID. And it may well be that ongoing, it'll help us with, with other respiratory things. With the South Boiler, is that the one that, is that, and I apologize for my faulty memory, but we had one. Didn't we replace boilers? Is this the one we replaced the boilers and one didn't work?
Yes, you are correct. This was directly tied to the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project that the district had engaged in a few years ago. I want to say three to four years ago. And there has been, I'm going to be real cautious with what I say here just because I, I know there's, you know, there's potentially some pending litigation.
Yeah, we should probably. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, but yes, you are correct. That is the, that is the boiler.
Okay, and presumably with the, the project that we're, the, is it Dewey that's looking at the West Intermediate renovations or?
Yes, that's who will be doing it. Yes.
Okay, because, because for the, for the move, the plan move in 2023, 2022.
Right. Well, you know, I was with the four representatives with, from Dewey, including their owner. And we were walking through West Intermediate the other day and, you know, we were discussing, you know, the plans and what we would like to be doing with it. And number one, they think it's a beautiful facility, but they said obvious, they, they knew exactly the year it was constructed because it was open space. They said it had to be built in 1973, 74, 75, because that's when all those, that's when all the schools were open space and they're spot on. It was 74.
We were teaching with Cuisin' Air Rams.
Yes, but they said, you know, it's a beautiful facility, but when you start creating this additional space, it's going to impact the HVAC system because the HVAC system is set up to be open as it is. And when we start manipulating that space, that, that's probably the biggest obstacle there. And I thought, you know, I found that to be very interesting, but they're going to develop a solution for it and certainly I'll bring it forward for your consideration once we have a definitive plan.
Okay, thanks, Paul. I'm sorry. I just had a few specific questions and I.
Oh, that's quite all right.
Over to you. The environmental testing and remediation is needed and.
Yeah, I mean, we continue to work with, with Kuchardi. We did our lead testing at the end of December as, as we do every year. You know, items that did come up above or had traces of lead, we took them out of service. And I'm very happy to report, and I don't know if I've reported this previously, but I know I've talked about it, but right now all of our consumption points is the sinks that we use for consumption points. They all have point of use water filters on them by, you know, the manufacturer's 3M, they're designed for schools with long-term filters. So we have over 150 of them installed. So all of our cafeterias, all of our faculty rooms, all of our medical rooms, how now all have filtered water. And they're designed to last for a year. Right now our, our fountains are out of service and that's not necessarily because of lead. That's because of COVID. Whereas we cannot have fountains operating. So what I have done is I ordered two water bottle filling stations and to see if they would meet our needs. And again, they're filtered, so they would filter lead out. So when we get those, believe it or not, it was a four to five month lead time in ordering them because again, manufacturing is, is just so far behind. So we expect them in probably about another month. We will install them and if they meet our needs, you know, potentially we could be going in that direction for, you know, water bottle filling stations in our school, filtered water, which would solve all of our issues with water consumption. But I'm very, very happy to say that our, you know, our consumption points for the sinks have all been addressed and you, you don't know, again, how happy that makes me to say that. We also bought the filters already for replacing next year. So we're not going to be ordering them as we're expired. So we already have the 150 filters on deck, ready to swap.
Fantastic.
Yes. So next, we'll always just work a year ahead. But we are in, we're in a real good position with that. I'm thrilled with how the progress we've made on that.
Fantastic. Okay.
The, the one new item that kind of popped up that kind of took us all by surprise was we've, we had an issue with the fire panel at Isaac Tripp Elementary, which is a relatively new school, 10 or 11 years old. Now, we do use Johnson controls, which is really, I want to say, and Dr. Finan, correct me if I'm wrong, it's almost like the only game in town for this. But the alarm was going off pretty consistently without an emergency. So we went over and Johnson suggested that we replace the fire panel, which at first doesn't sound like it's that huge of a deal. And then they give you a quote for like $80,000. Exactly. And I said, oh, is this, and this is about a week ago or so. And I said, whoa, is it operational? And they said, yes, it's operational right now. I said, great. I will discuss this at an operations committee meeting next week with the board. But just to put that on your radar and we will see what other solutions are out there for it. But, you know, I was kind of taken aback by that. And I did ask Dewey to take a look at that also because that's also a, you know, an area of expertise that, that they possess with fire systems. So we are going to, you know, totally vet it, but at some point we are going to have to replace that.
Now, did you say that the bids are almost ready to go out for Armstrong's air conditioning or?
The bids, the bids are almost ready to go for the abatement on the Northeast Intermediate Old Side in the ventilation.
My bad.
Yep, they're about, when, in speaking to Rocco over the last week, they're about two weeks away from being finalized. They did share, I've had multiple meetings already with Dewey and included our engineers from GPI and our reps from Kuchardi. So now that we're all working, you know, we're all in the same meetings together. So they are like this. So Dewey is also vetting everything that, you know, is provided to us from Kuchardi and also through GPI. So they're putting eyes on it to say, yes, this is the direction we should probably be going. No, this is probably not what you want to be doing. And that's, that, you know, that's welcomed. That's certainly welcome, that level of expertise. Now, the Armstrong HVAC system, essentially we're at the point where, you know, we have some decisions to make as to what type of system are we, are we actually looking at? Initially, it was designed as a, as a VRF system, which is eliminates all water and it's all refrigerant. Now Dewey has come in, reviewed some of the, you know, the ideas for that and they're thinking that maybe we don't want a VRF system and we should be looking at a VAV system, which is similar, much more efficient than what's there, obviously. But it's similar to how a typical air conditioning system would work as far as cooling, heating and dehumidification. So that's, that's an ongoing discussion. So that's something that if, if there are significant changes to that design, that I'm not sure that can go out this summer for bits. We would have to make a short term solution of how to get through the hot weather. But, because the heat is fine. It's, it's the air conditioning that causes the problems there. So I mean, if, obviously, if we move back in May and it's 80 degrees, we have to have a solution to that, but it's, we'll find a short term solution.
Did, did we have a problem this summer with mold or did we not have a problem with some of this mold this summer? And I can't remember. You did explain to me.
And I just, we, we just didn't turn the air conditioning on. What's happening is, really, because when the air conditioning is not on, there's not water running through the units. We could not control the humidity. And again, this ties back to, you know, the energy savings project where the water valves were taken out of those units and they were trying to control it with, with temperature. And I, I'm not going to pretend I'm an engineer. But basically water was constantly flowing through the units, which means there was constant humidity in the classrooms. And that's what we battled with the, with the mold that through the summer of 18 and the, in the summer of 19, until, until Dr. Finan came in and said, remove every piece of carpet from every classroom, which was a, a big help. But we did not turn the air on at all. From last March, it has not, obviously, because we were out due to COVID. So we didn't turn the air on and there was, there was no issue at all this summer.
All right. Well, so, but do you think it may cause a delay for this summer?
It may. And I, I, I don't have all the information on that because we have some decisions to make as far as VRF or VAV. Doctor, like it's, can you add it? I know you were on the call with me the other day and we were discussing some of that.
Yes, I, I think there are a couple of considerations. One is they did examine the pipes in the ceiling and there's some other work that might, that will have to be done that was unexpected. So they're looking, they're examining that. The second piece about what system to use, one has a longer lifespan than the other. And when you're talking industrial, we want a longer lifespan. So we're just going to have to wait to see what the engineers come back with. I, I think that school is in pretty good, pretty good condition. And so by upgrading that HVAC system, we will have, you know, I'd like to say another 50 years out of it. So I, I think what we have to do is wait and look at the whole picture. Remember, it was, it was really a time when we were really scrambling to try to fix the mold. And we did, we fixed it. We were able to get children back in that building. And the examination of how to fix the air conditioning was the next system. But the problem with, with the design is we already have a, a unit ventilator in every building. So if we're going, if we're going to use, not use those and use another system, we have to do something with the old unit ventilator. So we're really looking at this as a longer term project than what we did when we were just trying to mitigate the mold and get students back in. So that's why, and when they looked in the ceiling and looked at some of the elbows, there were some concerns. And so we're going to wait for the whole report, just to kind of give you a, that's about as much as we all know at this point in time.
But, you know, want to do, you know, want to do, want to Dewey's suggestions was though like, so you want to do the HVAC system, like what are you going to do with the old piping? And again, I'm an engineer, I'm an educator. I was like, I, I don't know. Like, he's like, you need a plan. Like, you know, you're going to be running new duck work and you're, you're going to spend significant amounts of money. Why not just finish the renovation of the whole school? Because you're not talking that much more money. And then you're, you have like a 25 year to 30 year solution at Armstrong and you're done. And I was like, well, that's, that's actually a pretty good idea. That's a pretty good idea. So like, again, you bringing Dewey into this is, is, like I said, it's a game changer for us, but I will certainly keep the board appraised as to the status of this. It's been on my radar for a year and a half and it's not going to go off until we get it finalized.
I know. I'd, I'd love the way you're thinking because I sometimes, I mean, in our own personal lives, you sometimes spend more money at the beginning to get the longer lifespan and everything else. And there's nothing more infuriating than doing half a renovation than having to go back and redo what you've done. Because you're going to do something else. So I think that's a great idea to look at it that way. And I now know a lot about VRF and VAV.
Me too.
Okay. So is anyone any questions about any of these matters that we're raised? No? Well, then should we move on to item four, correct, on the agenda, which is the the operation and it's a very pompous way of saying the operational and facilities implications of the move of fifth grades to NIS and SSIS nine twenty twenty-one. It's a very pompous way of saying. You know, there's obviously things that need to be done that I just am think that it might be good to get a heads up. And at this point, like the nineteen, you know, the nineteen oh four side of the building, how many classrooms we've got, will they accommodate the kids? Parking.
That's yeah.
Ingress and egress. Don't you love those words? Ingress and egress?
I do.
And one of my things that I'm concerned about, particularly at Northeast, is possibly the possibility of you're going to have an extra couple of hundred fifth graders there. And outdoor space, because I think a ten year old is needs a different kind of outdoor space to a thirteen, fourteen year old.
I don't I don't, certainly, I don't disagree with that. The nineteen oh four side or Northeast and specifically with facilities implications and operational. You know, we talked about it, the abatement of the ventilation system on the nineteen oh four side, absolutely critical if that happens. At that point, the the asbestos management plan will have to get updated. Because right now, the management plan we have for that building, it's almost like the nineteen oh four side doesn't exist. So we we created a new management plan that only lists the new side, because we weren't going to use that old side as the school, which we're going to do if we get back this year. We'll just be using that new side. So we'll have to update the management plan to reinclude the nineteen oh four side. We're going to have to repair and repaint some plaster walls, which is certainly not a huge deal. That's certainly something that we'll we'll look to do in-house. And the ventilation, potentially ventilation improvements from the study that's being conducted. We have to finish, the school board had authorized, I want to say a renovation to the front doors on Gibson Street, I want to say back in late seventeen, early eighteen. And there was a plethora of issues that kind of arose out of that. And it just, some of it got finished, some of it didn't. Well, that project would have to get finished. There would have to be, and really, what's the only piece that's missing is installation of new doors. So that would have to be done. There'd be obviously transportation changes for Northeast, just to include grade five. We would need probably some additional hall monitors or air mark staff for the supervision of students in the hallways and cafeteria. Now, Northeast, and we'd also need additional parking for the that staff with the include, we would increase, I want to say by approximately fifteen staff members or sixteen staff members at Northeast. And more than likely, we would need to rent additional spots from the garage management company at Commonwealth Hospital right there. There is some outdoor space at Northeast. But there's not a lot. There is a little bit of green space right in front of the old side entrance. But there's not a lot. We we could look at redesigning something should the board want to move in that direction or give me that directive, we could certainly look at that. But yeah, I don't know how many options exist there.
Yeah, do maybe we we, I mean, I love how elegant that space is. I drive path to Northeast probably twice a day. And I love how elegant that is. And I think it would not be a disgrace to have it at Harvard or Yale. But Harvard or Yale doesn't have ten year olds.
All right.
And there are a lot of raised stone benches, and there are a lot of raised bricks, and there are a lot of raised things there. And maybe it it might have to the age a bit and go back from being from as sophisticated as this. But but maybe I mean, that is, for me, that is, I think, putting the fifth grades in into the middle school makes a lot of sense. It makes us well, you know, kindergarten to four, five to eight, nine to twelve, which I think is quite a traditional American system of of division of your grades. And I think it makes a lot of sense for the fifth graders to be there. But I think we need to maybe look at the fact that we that they will need more space. I mean, if everyone is having lunch, you know, everyone's going in and out and having time outside. We are adding quite a lot of students to that group.
Yeah. And like our intermediate students typically don't go outside throughout the course of the school day. Like it's at intermediate school after lunch, I'm sorry, at elementary school after lunch, they'll go outside for fifteen or twenty minutes. Our intermediates do not. They have a thirty minute lunch period and then they return to class. Now, they may go outside as part of a phys ed class at some of the schools, depending on the space that's available. But typically around lunches, they do not.
What does what does, what what sort of outdoor space do they have for phys ed and gym and athletics?
At Northeast? I don't, I don't know if there's any. I mean, Mrs. McTernan, I know that you were an administrator there. Did you use that space in front? At Northeast?
At Nor, can you, in the beginning, in the front of the building?
Yes. That green space that's out in front on the other side of the courtyard.
You remember, I was there way before the medical college was there. That was, that was a long time ago. When I was there, yes, we absolutely did use that space, but it was more for in the morning. Or if it was a nice day at at lunch, we would allow them to go out there. But
You probably still had the big field back there, right?
We had, yeah, that's what I mean. Like, so I you can't really compare when I was there and how it is now.
My apologies. I didn't realize that.
I I have, I have, having two children there recently, I can say that I, there really is no outdoor gym activity, because you have right out, right there on Gibson, and then it's all concrete. And then you have the entrance where the college students go in and out. So
Right. And there's a little bit of a green space right in front of that. But it's it's small. I mean, it's small.
It it's, I I I'm sorry, I'm not trying to play gotcha. I just think it's an issue that maybe we just need to think about, because, you know, if we've got nearly, we'd probably with the fifth grades there, we'd have nine hundred to a thousand students, I would imagine.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, there'd be, there'd be about a thousand or just over a thousand. Yes.
So so, you know, it just just even comings, goings and all that. I'm not suggesting we have to find a solution. There may be no solution. But it may be something that we can, we can factor in with. I'm beginning to think of Dewey's as people who can come in and 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 say, oh, we can fix that.
Well, we might be able to take a look and redesign the outside space. I mean, because there is the the little courtyard where there's concrete and benches. And I I don't know how applicable that is anymore. So potentially, that could be used into some green space. I I don't, I don't know the answer to that. But I could, I certainly, I made a note to try to, to try to look into it.
Thanks. I'm not, may may not be a solution. And I'm not trying to say that there should be one, but it may be something that we could look at.
Right. I mean, it's probably a very similar situation at South, to be to be perfectly honest. There's not a lot of outdoor space at South either.
I was just going to say that, Paul. I think if we are pursuing this at Northeast, we'd have to look at it at South as well.
Yes, there is. I know in the back of South where they park, there is, again, there's a there's a plot of green space right there, but I I doubt it's used. I mean, it's it's really not near an exit or any kind of entrance area where it's accessible.
Yeah. No, I had that as one of my questions when we got onto item B. Because I do think, I do think that given even even as covid, you know, even if we beat covid, outside is more and more important with education, I think, you know, I just, it's I know some schools are looking at just getting out as much as they can.
Yeah, I mean, it's 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 a very, it's a very unique situation, because again, a year ago, if we said we were looking for opportunities to get kids outside, we would have been like, absolutely not. They need to be in the building. They need to be locked down, like, keep doors locked. And now it's like, there's a complete one eighty, where it's like, let's get kids outdoors. You should be opening windows. Whereas I would go around and make sure every door was closed every day, like, multiple times a day. Yeah, it's it's a very different, it's a total shift.
Yeah. My only concern about this, and even, you know, the meeting we had before about Bancraft Bancroft. And I know this is part of the plan and and everything, but you know, is it the time to add more kids to a building right now? With, we don't know what next year is going to look like with social distancing and the pandemic. You know, that's my concern right now. Is it the time to start putting more kids into one building and, you know, more employees? You know, I mean, when this plan was put together was before a pandemic. So I really hope we're really looking into that. Can we make a decision before we get? You know, we see what the state recommends for next year?
Dr. Fine, is that really accurate that this plan was put together before the pandemic? I I mean, not to correct you, Sean, but I do think this has kind of evolved with the pandemic in mind.
We, we this was a much more aggressive plan several months ago, a year ago, eighteen months ago. And that certainly has been considered as part of this.
That's, that's absolutely true. The reconfiguration part was always part of the recovery plan, and that, of course, was was completed prior to the pandemic. However, since the pandemic, a re, we have reconsidered what steps to take. And actually, the the nineteen oh four section of Northeast Intermediate School is huge. As Director Hume said, those classrooms are very large, very high ceilings, very large, compared to some of the elementary classrooms whose classroom sizes are much smaller. So I don't know if we're talking, you know, when you're talking total students, you need to look at the total square footage that you're talking about. Where if you want to compare size of classroom, like the elementary size of a classroom versus the older section of Northeast Intermediate School, those classrooms, that was built for high school. Those classrooms are much larger. So again, when we're talking pandemic and and there's no panacea, folks, there's no there's no perfect plan to handle pandemic. You have, we're going to have to take the data that we have and handle it as we go. The reconfiguration has always been part of a plan for reasons that I think are being distorted. The distortion is you have too many buildings to operate. The cost of operation, operational costs of all of those elementary schools are too many. You have too many. We need to consolidate those because you have available capacity in many of your buildings. That's been true for for a very long time. The outcry to maintain Northeast Intermediate was heard loudly by an administrative staff and the board. And we understand that that is something the community wants to preserve. So of course, one of the initial concerns was to close Northeast and then redistribute those students. We moved away from that. That that changed a year ago when the community didn't support that. They wanted to keep their intermediate school and their community open, which we all have agreed that that was the right, right decision. But to wait to see what the state's going to tell you, the state's going to have guidelines. We're going to have make to make the decisions based on what's best for our community. And and at this point in time, the reconfiguration is very minor. I mean, we're talking about the Whittier Annex closing, which you rent and you should be, shouldn't be renting when you have available capacity in your buildings. That just doesn't make sense. And then Bancroft, as we've talked about, and I have heard, well, why, it's only one point nine million dollars. That calculation was done in two thousand twelve. That's not the number that it would cost today. And there are some things in that building that can never be remediated, that can never be fixed. So I I think, I think it's unfair to say that we didn't really consider things as we moved through the pandemic. I think your point about open air, green space, we need to look at that. I think that's a new issue that we definitely consider. And Mr. Doherty is right. Intermediate schools, you call them intermediate, many schools call them, many districts call them middle schools. They don't have recess. Okay, recess is when children go outside on a play area. What middle schools often do, though, and I think you'll see more of that, as well as high schools, is taking students out to do a class outside. You know, do a a writing class. That's very popular in middle schools and high schools. So I think it's very fair that we investigate finding green spaces for at least the size of a class. And maybe it's not to play dodgeball, because you would do that in a gym. But and certainly certainly Northeast Intermediate School has a very nice sized gym. But that the outdoor space, I think we can look at reconfiguring what we we can get there for at least the size of a class that we can put outside.
Uh, Dr. Fine, and I just want to add something, because one thing that I, as I'm listening to everyone speak, the first thing is that planning, obviously, I think you can say that the administration and yourself have really taken a lot of time, not only looking at today's numbers, but also last year's numbers. So that I want to make very clear, that we're not just looking at pandemic numbers. The second thing that I want to state is, as we analyze, and this is just one example. I was asked a question about where will the kindergarten kids go next year? When I start looking at numbers from last year, and this again is just one example. And we certainly could could look at all of these numbers. But as I look at the kindergarten numbers last year from and compared January of two thousand nineteen to January of twenty, the number of sections we had, we had a hundred and fifty open seats in all of the sections. So we have kindergarten in every building, a number of sections in every building. So when everyone says, where are the kids going? You know, those are all the things that truly, if we're going to run a good district that's financially sound, a hundred and fifty open seats is unacceptable. So how do we fix that? You know, we we tried to put some things in place where as of Jan, as of June first and and we would move kids into open seats and not add another section. So that's just one example. And we will continue to analyze that. But yes, we have, we have to maximize maximize our classes. Because that's what's, what, that's what we need to do financially for our taxpayer taxpayers, to make sure that we're doing what we need to do. So Director McAndrew, yes, we're looking at pandemic numbers, but we're also looking at pre pandemic numbers. And we're also looking at how to efficiently run a district. And having a hundred and fifty open seats that weren't during a pandemic is not acceptable. So I I I hope that just answers a little bit of your question and as we move forward.
I I have a kind of a piggyback question. So just in terms of moving the the fifth grades to the middle schools, if we have to maintain and 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 spread students out, do we have the ability to do that within Northeast with getting the nineteen, with getting the nineteen hundred section up to date with, you know, at South? Do we have the ability, if we have to, to spread kids out if you know, things don't change by the fall?
Can you just clarify that? What do you mean, spread them out?
I I am, we have to have like six feet of space in between desks.
I see what you're saying. Yeah.
That was what I, right, yes, to to socially, I'm sorry, to socially distance the students.
Yeah. Okay.
That I forgot the word. So, thank you.
That's okay. That's okay.
To socially distance, yeah.
You're asking me for next year if we can socially distance, or you're asking me if we're to bring kids back now?
Oh, no. So with the Bancroft thing, I know it's a concern that if, you know, moving the kids and and closing the annex, moving fifth grade into the middle schools. If we need to socially distance them in the fall, do we have the ability to do that? Are are the classrooms big enough? Do we have enough space at Northeast to to accommodate fifth grade if we have to socially distance?
So each principal was responsible for doing the square footage of each room, depending on the room and how many students that we can fit. Every bit, every principal did that, you know, in the first phase when we were trying to figure out a hybrid schedule. So if we have to socially distance six feet apart starting the school year, we can't go back in a traditional setting. I mean, that I can tell you, you know, if we have a class of thirty, that's not going to work. Now, there may be a larger size class. I'm totally talking in generalities here. So we wouldn't put, we would have to create a schedule to answer your question, if the social distancing is still in effect. We would have to create a schedule based on the number of kids in the class and how many kids we can bring in.
Okay.
Because that would be for, that would be for every building.
Correct. I think if we were in hybrid, yes. Correct. I think if we were in hybrid, yes, I think we could socially distance, whereas if we were in A and B. Because Mr. Haney was able to set up a hybrid schedule for his current population on just the new side. And set up social distancing in those classrooms. Then 1904 side, we're bringing approximately 20 classrooms into the equation. So the addition of fifth grade there would not impact social distancing if we were in a hybrid schedule.
Hybrid schedule. Okay.
Correct. If we're, if we're in a traditional schedule, we can't social distance in any.
Okay.
Nowhere.
Okay.
Just, just to piggyback off that question, Mr. Doherty, and a bit out of left field, and I don't mean to throw this at you without giving you a heads up, because I normally do. But when we started in March, there was a lot of concern about transmission by touch. That the virus was on surfaces. I mean, I'm not the only person who scrubbed my chip bag. And put my groceries on the porch for the first couple of months. Now that we have reached a phase where it seems that transmission by touch is an extraordinarily small part. Of the transmission of the virus and that aerosol transmission by droplet. Is is the 99.5% purveyor. Do, how much, you know, we, we, I am absolutely not suggesting we slack off on our cleaning. But equally, I think we need to recognize that. The click, the, the, you know, that that if there are slight lapses in cleaning, it is not going to be as significant as lapses in mask wearing. Or crowding together in in unventilated spaces, that it's much less significant than it was.
Well, I mean, I'll take off my engineering hat and put on my scientist hat. Row, I I read as much as you do and just in everything I've read that a lot of the concern in March was about touch transmission and on surfaces and. And not as much aerosol base. Whereas now it's almost all transmission. Now they they're tying back to being aerosol based. So I mean, that being said, I I think a lot of the deep cleaning, I think it's great. I mean, we had great examples of it at at high school football games this year. At halftime, we had our maintenance staff that were using their sprayers and spraying down the benches at halftime and we're using them in all parts of the building. And I certainly think in this atmosphere. I think that's very, very important because again, we want to eliminate any possibility, even if it's a small percentage, a small 1% chance that it's passed that way. We want to make sure that our surfaces are sanitized. But it is not as much of a concern as was initially thought last March. I agree with you.
Yeah, because I've had one, I was, one of our parents approached me and sort of said, why aren't we doing temperature checks? And I went off being a, being a nerd, went off and researched that. And it is probably the least effective. Method of containing the virus that you can find because it's the asymptomatic spread, I think, is responsible for.
It is. And that's, that's why kids spread it is asymptomatic. Over 50% of kids, if when they're test positive, they're asymptomatic. And that's where the infections are happening. So they don't have a fever. And in speaking to our environmental consultants, they said, actually, you'd be better off giving a scratch and sniff test at the door than taking temperatures. Because one of the first things is lack of smell or lack of taste, one of the first symptoms, and it's prevalent in many, many cases. But that's much more of an indicator than temperature. And I found that very interesting and that's obviously.
Very good idea. Yeah, I'm going to go get some, go up to the department stores and get those perfume things.
Well, you, you could thank Rocco DePietro from Cachardi for that one.
I thank him for so much. No, so I'm just sorry, I just wanted to allay the idea that by not having temperature checks, we are not. Leaving an obvious avenue unexplored. It is not, temperature checks are not, are not.
No, I mean.
I'm considering it ineffective.
No, the CDC doesn't even recommend it anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Follow up on that. I I think that I'm sure administration is working with our our medical, our nurses and our medical staff to determine the best protocols, right, to go back.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we meet and and Mr. Genoletza meets with the nursing staff all the time, but. I'm very fortunate to, two things, I have a weekly meeting with. Ms. Boland of the SFT president and Lou Anne Heenan from the president of the Maintenance Union and the Clerks Union. And also representatives from AFT National and AFT Pennsylvania. And we talk about all these exact things. So we're all on the same page. We do that weekly, myself, Mr. Genoletza and Miss Gribek, we meet with them. And then every two weeks, I'm very fortunate to be included in the city task force with all the local doctors and. And CEOs of the hospitals and all the university presidents. I don't know how I snuck onto that one, but I'm very fortunate that I'm on that one because I learned something new every time I'm on that. And I mean, that's really hearing it from the doctors firsthand about best practices. It's eye opening. It's absolutely eye opening, but absolutely, we want to do everything we can to maximize safety walking into our buildings.
So I I think then the public, you know, our faculty, they can have confidence that, you know, we're covering all of those bases before we consider sending. Our students and our staff back into the schools.
Absolutely. And you know what was very nice to hear when I was, you know, with with the representatives from Dewey Walk in our buildings? And obviously our buildings need work, but they were like. You know, they had, obviously Scranton gets a lot of negative press and they said, we didn't really know what to expect walking into your buildings. They said, but your buildings are meticulously clean, like they're, they're clean. As we walk around, we're seeing very good things. They said, obviously, work needs to be done, but there's a lot of positives that are happening in the buildings. And that was, you know, that was very nice to hear. Because I think that sometimes, you know, we get a bad rap, but I think our maintenance staff does a very good job making sure our buildings are ready.
All right, a huge rap to, a huge rap to, to Mr. Buglisi and all of the maintenance staff and.
They do a good job. They really do.
But their heart's in it, too.
Absolutely.
Is absolutely in it. You can tell.
Right.
So it's a fantastic thing. So anyone else got any questions on, in item four?
I just have one question regarding maintenance. Is there anything that maintenance has to, any type of log that they have to maintain? For the CDC or not even the CDC, but for the Department of Health that to show cleanings are being done, like, is there any type of log or documentation?
Not that I'm, not officially that I'm aware, but we've actually been talking about that, setting up checklist. For, we're developing checklist to not really, not for like accountability purposes, but to make sure they're hitting every part of what they're supposed to be doing. Now, we have the backpack sprayers, like essentially, we want those operating all day at some point, like at some point, they should be walking and spraying. And we were going to put checklist maybe on the back of bathroom doors and, you know, and high.
That's what made me think of it. That's what made me think of it, like some of these other facilities that you go to where it shows you the last person that cleaned it and when. Like, I just wasn't sure if, you know, that was, I wasn't sure if that was something that was a part of any requirement.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but that's, it's funny you're asking that because because Carl and I have been talking about that, that exactly.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Mrs. Gribek, um. Are fifth graders given recess now as they're in the elementary school?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So you're at the eight o'clock hour. So I think Director Hume, we might need to entertain a motion to adjourn to a later time. To have a brief executive session before our 8:30 meeting.
Okay, I'm, I would make a motion that we adjourn this meeting and reconvene. There's very little left on the agenda. We could reconvene post the special meeting, if that's all right with you, President Gilmarten.
That's fine with me. May we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be adjourning to executive session now and we will be back for our voting meeting at 8:30.